Are we ready to go, Justin? I'm calling this meeting. I'm calling this meeting. It's a special meeting of the Blue Lake City Council to order. It's June 11th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Our first order of business, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
May I go?
Here.
May I come, Schultz?
Present.
Councilmember one.
Here.
Councilmember, I've got. It's Monday in the day.
Thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda. There's not a whole lot here, but if anyone wants to think anything.
I guess I need to grab it over to you.
There's one on the table there. So there is pretty much only one item of business for this evening, and that's our draft budget presentation. Is there anyone who would like to move anything around? We need a motion to approve the agenda as delivered.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion made by Elizabeth, I'm sorry, motion made by Angela Shell, seconded by Christopher Agar to approve the agenda as posted. Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes. Public comment, item three. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for a public comment? Lisa and then Kent Sawatsky and I see Becky, but I don't see a hand there. So let's start with Lisa. Oh, and then after Kent is Julie. Okay, go ahead, Lacey.
My name is Cooper and I learned that there was a general plan presentation by planner Gary Reese at last month's planning commission meeting, and I was not able to find any record according to this meeting online, so I could not watch it. So I called Mr. Reese to ask him some questions about the presentation and the general plan in general. For the topic of the presentation, yes, there is a need to modernize the document, which I believe is what Gary Reese thought at the meeting. To bring its accessibility is the current plan has sections amassed date back to 1986 and other sections, they'll update it in 2009, but the continuity of the documents, I mean, previous sections and more current sections is very hard to follow if you're trying to look at it. I would ask that Mr. Reese be provided an opportunity to provide the presentation at a city council meeting. So that's a request I'd like to make. Because I really appreciate talking to him on the phone, and I'm sorry I missed that meeting, but he also thinks that it'd be a good idea to have it at the council meeting. So I'd like to put that out there as a request. And also in speaking with Mr. Reese, I also learned a bit about the relationship between elements of the planning and the topic of plan consistency and association with some of the recent development zoning proposed by the city. City planning is not a simple topic. It takes expertise to navigate and ensure the connections between what was said, the one section of the document, and the respective elements that have covered all of that. Of importance and appreciated in speaking with Mr. Reese is I was able to ask questions and provide responses to his feedback. I found the exchange productive. With this said, I would ask this, as I have before and others have as well, that aside the city council presentation, there be separate forums provided by Mr. Reese and perhaps members of the planning commission, where members of the community can learn about the general plan, its role, its relevance to proposed actions, and learn about sections of the plan that are perhaps outdated and in need of updating. Not all sections, but some of the main kind of priorities. Such a forum could we give to community members and opportunity to communicate with the city planner and the commissioners specifically to ask what we have the time to do so in order to sort of better understand the general plan, to hear with the planner, the commissioners, consider our priority topics for updating, and also provide the community an opportunity to provide feedback that is documented on such topics, as well as introduce other topics to consider moving locally. Such a forum would facilitate communication, provide a learning opportunity for all parties, and ultimately provide a setting for a more productive exchange than what is today in a city council meeting, so due to time limits and things like that. In summary, I offer the panel, identifying upcoming county leaders who was to provide the presentation that was given at the planning commission meeting and schedule community meetings related to the general plan to facilitate mutual learning who falls through public engagement. Thank you very much.
Kent Sawatsky.
Given to my entire speaker set. So many reasons when you need total confidence about the general plan, you're going to find that you don't have the foundation, you're going to find it's whole. Reasons it's not excuses, where a lot of things didn't happen related to during COVID. And during COVID is when some major changes went through and the people were not able to participate. Now they most likely participate after that. Name is the writer's chamber, which, you know, I have spoken on every single topic this time, as I do frequently. I gave, I gave your in some of the comments on non-GAAP, but I refer to it as nanny data. And this is an ongoing thing that will be happening near the supervisor meeting, the Lake United General, exactly what's happening in the lake. The reason why the reason I gave it and one of the biggest things I ever brought forward for this kind of. The supervisor, our gentleman, basically, and they do not have anything for him to do other than rubber dander. And yet we have not seen any form of budget. This is kind of like a three-month process for them to bring. So what I, what I pointed out there, so we're going to have a whole bunch of waving of hands by Manny saying you have to pass this budget right away. And this will happen possibly next meeting. That is not true. This budget can just be had continued on properly. So have here and the existing budget will be used until such time you folks have the opportunity to understand the budget. That's your obligation. Not mine, but I will be understanding and following, and I will be bringing things forward to you regarding this particular topic. So I, I do look forward to, uh, to the process. I do look forward to starting to understand. And I really don't know why we're here tonight. Others just pick up a piece of paper. You don't have time to review this on fly here. And I personally would suggest, unless, unless you are totally confident, I haven't seen this for a couple of minutes, totally understandable budget. We're way better than I would ever be, and I think that compliment, which is measured things of this nature. I will have people reviewing the budget for consistency, which means for all my time, since there are some major things that I don't think you're betting for. Such thing as costs that will be incurred for prior things possibly share, costs for litigation for updating your general plan. All these things are things you need to incorporate in this budget somehow, because if you don't think that are going to be necessary, you can move forward in any sector, including in kind of major development, counting your point of opportunity zone, or as I refer to it, who like poverty law. They come up to you speak, and then we can all work together on this budget. I hope you can actually understand what's going on, but not just represent it. But just a bunch of people saying, hey, we, we, we're going to do what staff says to do. You have the obligation to talk to your faculty, and so I'm around you to speak.
Julie, you were next, I think.
Uh, Justin, right on. Thank you, homie. You are our number one aspect to deal transparency. I do have some notes later down, but make sure they get out first. I appreciate being here in person. You guys usually get down on Zoom. And I fought Chris Jones since day one, and I appreciate it being there. It's something that every municipality uses, something they use for transparency and um, we've got to get better on our package material. We've got to get better on that. Through all, through all our departments of commissions have to do that. It's imperative for more transparency. Uh, we've never had this council say it's okay. Um, I never heard the report tonight. Perhaps that's happening on Zoom. Um, we are supposed to be uploading these to access Humboldt as we record them. Um, Zoom is very easy to run. It extends homeschool two and a half years during COVID and ran Zoom like a professional. So the negligence so far have to be ruled. I've seen the recordings. I'm not going to buy it. I do concur with Lisa and Kent, and thank you, Lisa, for doing research. We've been doing it from one, one region, starting talking about Power Creek's district. And there have been multiple community members that have brought this up, and each time we bring up something that's of concern, you get shoved under the bus with another presentation. We are lacking community input and participation. We are given presentations, not, not documentation. I have come here to get this, okay? And that's, that's got to stop too. That's not acceptable. When we are having presentations, if our presenter this evening has something to go on that screen, back during COVID days, when you're actually uploading our videos to access Humboldt Core, we did do that more because how council conducted themselves, I could see that screen online. Justin's in an area, he cannot afford that screen. Perhaps this would be a better position. We are denying more public access to everybody on that screen sharing and reporting to know whether it's the municipality in this town who does that. They all screen share. Okay, access Humboldt will prove that fact for me. And I just want to again, thank, thank you to Justin and what everybody does. I do appreciate everybody's time in here. But when we are not given time to be a public participant, we are no longer a public participant. That's your responsibility, number one. Thank you.
I don't know. I see a hand up there. Uh, is that Winona?
Yeah.
Okay, you're on, Winona.
Winona? Hi, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Um, it looks like the mute button is on for Amanda Major. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't been able to hear anything at the meeting. That's all I wanted to say, because I don't really know what you're talking about, because I couldn't hear, but the mute button's been on since the beginning of the meeting. Thanks for turning that on.
Did you have a public, a public comment, Winona?
She just said that was her public.
That was it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other public comment this evening? All right, we'll move on to our item four, fiscal year 2024-25 draft budget presentation, a discussion. And we have with us Scott, our fiscal administrator. Thank you for being here.
That's all.
When you see the numbers or something.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for having me. Um, tonight I'm here to, um, just talk to you about the preliminary budget for fiscal year 24-25. Um, this is kind of, my plan is to kind of go over, um, the summary part of the budget, which is pages one through four in the packet. The details are five through 20, and the CIP is on 21. So we kind of go over it at a summary level, and then that would give you the opportunity over the next couple of weeks to digest it and come forward with any questions.
So this is a, a full, um, complete, uh, is a complete budget?
Yeah.
To, to date?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we start out on page one, um, we've got the general funds. Um, we've got revenues of about 2.4 million. Um, within that number, it's kind of a large number this year. Um, we've got, um, about 1.5 million, uh, related to the Greenwood Street Improvement Project. So that's state funded. So that's a big reason why the, the revenues in the general fund are, you know, extremely high this year.
Um, Scott, could I interrupt you and just ask you to bring your microphone closer to you so that, um, the recordings, so people in the, that watch the recording?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, also within, um, the general fund as far as revenues go, um, got really strong property tax revenue increase over the last year. Um, the, uh, sales and use tax, which includes the district tax, um, is a significant, um, item this year. Um, just in comparison to a couple of years ago, the sales and use tax was about $30,000 and we jumped 60, and now it's projected at 160,000, which is a really nice filler for the loss of the, the city of, or the, um, Blue Lake Powers rental or the, the Blue Lake Power Company's rental of, of your facility.
Is, is there a line item here for those items or you're on this, on page one?
Um, page five begins with the details.
Okay.
So it will kind of give you the, the details of, of these summary items. I was just kind of hitting on some of the, the major revenue changes over the prior year. Um, a lot of the other revenues stayed fairly, um, stable. Um, the park and rec fees are projected to, um, increase, um, roughly, you know, 20% as, as the park and rec, uh, director is, you know, becoming really aggressive with, um, developing our programs. Um, as far as back on page one, the transfers in, um, it's about $92,000. That's going to be, um, transfers coming in from the gas tax, special revenue funds. That number's fairly consistent with prior years. Um, moving down into the expenditures and transfers out, um, just kind of a general theme is, um, you know, there was an increase in salaries and wages, I think, just to stay competitive, as well as, um, there has been some succession planning going on as, um, there are certain staff members that are going to be retiring here in the near future. So you got kind of a duplication of, of some wages during that succession and training process. Um, another thing is, um, the health insurance, um, is due to, um, flames, um, is projected to increase about 10% this year.
What pages, Adam, Scott?
Um, well, it's kind of just throughout the budget. I'm just kind of giving you some
Okay.
kind of general, um, idea of, of some of the items that.
So you said it's going to increase by 10%?
10% is the projection, yeah.
Thanks.
The other thing is, um, you know, there's a pretty substantial increase in, in, um, utility cost. So that will carry into this current fiscal year.
And that's accounted for?
Yes.
In the budget. Okay, good.
So kind of looking at the expenditures and transfers out for the general fund, we got about 3,800 on the mayor and city council, 5,100 on legal, uh, general government, about 267, planning about 55, building about 31, uh, law enforcement's about 25, which does, um, contain a little bit of the funding that the, the SLESF, special revenue fund could not cover. So I think there's about $10,000 of the 24-25 sheriff's contract that will be covered by the general fund. Um, we've got animal control at about 24,000, public works or animal control at about 10,000. We've got public works and streets at about 108,000. Um, parks and rec and other facilities about 191,000. Recreation about 279,000. And our big capital outlay number of 1.5 million, which I said before was primarily the, the Greenwood Street Improvement Project. Um, there's a plan for the purchase of a couple of vehicles as well as, um, some carryover of the town square improvement project. So overall, the, the general fund is projected to have, you know, maybe about a $7,000 excess. And at the end of the fiscal year, the, the projected fund balance is, is about 760,000. Um, moving over into the Powers Creek District Fund, um, the revenues in this fund seem kind of high over historical numbers. That's because there's, um, about $77,000, um, a state grant that will be used to, um, fund the, the capital outlay, um, remaining on the, the town square project. And you can see that capital outlay down below.
So why does the Powers Creek Fund pay for the town square?
Um, I think the town square was planned, was kind of an economic development project. So, um, the, um, you know, the, the grant revenues came into that fund and then they're used to, you know, cover the capital outlay.
So, um, so the money in the Powers Creek Fund is, is all grant funds, or is there any actual income coming from Powers Creek?
Um, there is, there is some income, um, coming in, but in terms of funding the town square projects, it's just the grant revenue.
Okay. Sure.
Um, so the excess in Powers Creek District Funds projected at about 24,000, which would bring the fund balance at the end of the year to about 10,000. Um, the next fund is the CDBG Non-Program Income Fund. Um, revenues are about $5,000. That's primarily, um, some collection on a loan and as well as some interest income. And then the transfers in of about 29,000 is, is coming from the CDBG funds, um, because the, they don't reach the, they are below the $35,000 thresholds. They're able to be defederalized and moved over into the, uh, CDBG Non-Program Income Fund, which the city controls. Um, one of the expenses, the CDBG Program Income Fund was, um, 23,500, which is going to be for, um, the payoff of the town square debt. So I think a, a big majority of that's been paid down and, and the remaining balance is estimated at about the 23,500.
So you're budgeting that to come out of CBDG? But it's not approved to come out of that for that purpose, correct?
Correct. So I did present this to council, Lee, and said that we'd be bringing it back, um, probably through the budget process, but the staff recommendation is that we uh, pay off that remaining debt balance because it does have fairly high interest rate, um, and the funds are available to, um, to clear that debt.
So, um, the CDBG Non-Program Income Funds projected to have about a $10,000 excess, and that will bring the projected fund balance at June 30th to about 89,000. If we move over to page two, we've got all the special revenue funds. Um, these are mainly gas tax funds. So the first one is the Highway Users Tax Fund. Um, you'll see the revenues are equal to the transfers out, which are going to go over to the general fund to cover street-related costs. Um, the same with the TDA Street Fund. Uh, its revenues are equal to its transfers out, which are going over to the general fund. Um, the TDA Purchase Transportation Fund, its revenues are enough to cover the, uh, cost of the, the public transit contract for the year. Um, the Solid Waste Recycling Fund, um, we've got about 13,000 in revenues, and we're going to have, um, about $27,000 in, in costs, which will basically bring that special revenue fund at the end that special revenue funds, fund balance at the end of the year to, um, about zero. Um, the supplemental law enforcement fund, um, about 163,000 coming in. Um, it's going to use its carryover from 23-24 of about 16,000 to then fund on 179,000 of the approximate 195,000 sheriff's contract. The Regional Surface Transportation Fund, that's a, um, gas tax fund. Revenues are at about 12,000, combined with, um, a carryover and a fund balance of about 7,500 will allow the transfer over to the general fund to cover street costs of about 19,000. Um, next we have the CDBG Program Income Holding Fund. Um, its revenues are derived from, uh, loan repayment as well as, um, interest income related to the federal CDBG program. So because like I said before, this fund, its income is under the $35,000 threshold. You see at the bottom, there's a transfer out that will go over to fund 38 of about $20,000. And finally, we've got the CDBG Program Income Holding Fund, a program income fund. It's kind of the corpus. It's, it's got the money that's to loans, and it basically just collects interest until a future point where the funds are either, you know, reprogrammed like, like Manny was able to do with the, uh, the library improvement project, or, or the funds are lent out in accordance with the CDBG program. So flipping over to page three, we've got the water fund. So we've got the Water Operating Fund, total revenues about 617,000, total operating expenses about 645,000. Brings us to a deficit of about 28,000 with a projected fund balance at June 30th of about 322,000. This fund, I think you see a, um, a loss going on because again, like I said, there's, there's, um, a position there that it's going to be retiring out here in the near future. So there's kind of a duplication in training, um, that, that's kind of pushing that, uh, that deficit.
Do you have, um, figures for this for last year?
As far as.
So we can compare what this year, what next year is looking for as, uh, looking like, um, as compared to our current year?
Um, yeah, I think when, when you go through the, the detail, um, you'll see that the first, like for, you know, each of the different revenues or expenditures, the first column is the budget for 23-24. The second column is the projected actual for 23-24.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. I'm sorry. I hadn't gotten that far.
Um, next we have the Water Connection Fee Fund. Um, this basically generates interest income only. Um, and the same with the Water Capital Repair and Replacement Reserve Fund. Um, the Water Turbidity Reduction Fund, that's a fee that's charged to consumers, and it covers the cost charged by the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District related to, um, some turbidity reduction, infrastructure improvements that were made several years ago.
Can you remind me, what was the connection fee for this year?
Um.
It was a $10,000 connection fee. I mean, I'm glad we're not paying it again, but I was just curious.
Um, the.
I'm on 17, page 17.
Okay.
I was just looking at like this, this current year's budgets. What the connection fee. What the connection fee.
So we had but we'd budgeted ten and basically there were no new connections to the system.
Thank you.
So moving into the sewer funds, we've got the Sewer Operating Fund. Revenues of about six hundred and eleven thousand. And we've got transfers in of a hundred and twenty thousand, which is. A hundred and twenty thousand coming in from um. The Sewer Capital Reserve Fund. Cover a capital project.
That gets transferred into the operating fund and then goes out for capital improvement?
Yeah.
Why doesn't it come straight out of the capital um reserve fund?
Um, that's the way that um. Well, it goes into the Sewer Operating Fund, it pays for the capital expenditure and then that just becomes. You know, an asset of the sewer fund is. As a whole. So the the sewer capital. Repair and replacement reserves is kind of a holding tank. And then when the qualified um project's been identified, it's then transferred over to the. To the Sewer Operating Fund for. Payment of capital outlay.
Because we don't make payments out of the other funds?
I mean, you could, um, this is just the way it's historically been done.
It's kind of confusing. It seems like that would it would be more direct to just pay for capital improvements out of the capital improvement fund. It'd be easier to track.
Next, we have the Sewer Connection Fund, um. Again, that the revenues matter. Interest only in this year. Um, and then we have the Sewer Capital Repair and Replacement Reserve Fund. You know, which its revenues are are interest incomes also. For fiscal year twenty four twenty five. So when you look at the fund balance at June thirtieth across the balance, we got the Water Operating Fund about three hundred and twenty two thousand. The Water Connection Fee Fund about two hundred and eighteen thousand. The Water Capital Repair and Replacement about fifteen thousand. The Water Turbidity Reduction Deficit of about eight thousand. The Sewer Operating Reserve, a deficit of about a hundred and eighty five thousand. But that number's slowly. Um, moving towards um the positive as the. The um sewer rate increase was implemented a couple of years ago. Um, the Sewer Connection Fee Fund about three hundred and fifty thousand in fund balance at June thirtieth. And the Sewer Capital Reserve and Replacement Fund will have about. One point four million for that fund. So moving over to page four. This is just the Dental and Vivs and Trust Fund. Basically. An excess of about four hundred and seventy two dollars with a a fund balance at June thirtieth about of about forty seven thousand. So then if we flip back to page twenty one. We've got the Capital Improvement Budget. By Fund. So the general fund has. Free. Capital expenditures, um the Greenwood Street Improvement Project of about one point five million. Um, the it's share of the purchase of a couple of small vehicles of about twelve thousand. And the Town Square Improvement Project. If I guess the finalization of that project of about seventy seven thousand. As far as the water and sewer funds, at this point, they've just got um. The um. Their share of the um. The vehicle purchase. So I think that's kind of concludes kind of the summary level presentation and like I said, um. You know, over the next couple of weeks, as you go through the detail, um please. Um, ask any questions to Mandy and and we'll get back to you with a with an answer as soon as possible.
So if the water um capital improvement. The uh, the Greenwood Lateral Replacement Project, is that coming out of next year's budget or this year's budget? Is that the fairly sizable number, if I recall?
And you know that one.
Well, they'll be done by.
It should be done by the end of June, okay.
So if it's done by the end of the the end of this fiscal year, then it won't carry over into next fiscal year, which starts on July first.
Yeah, so actually, um. So that transfer in over on page three then. Of a hundred and twenty, that's gonna take place this year.
But that's just sewer, right?
Um, yeah, the water didn't have any transfers coming in. It was just funding it with its operating fund because it doesn't. Have enough in its capital reserve and replacement fund. It's only got a fund balance of about fifteen thousand for that budget. So Mandy decided just to fund it solely with the. The Water Operating Fund, and I think that was something that he. Brought to council.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that now. So that'll be a budget amendment that we'll see in two weeks?
Yes. And anything else that you see that have questions about and want to have changed?
So the biggest deficit, it looks like from your figures. Was. Let's see, it looked like the um. The Waste Recycling Fund. Supplemental Law Enforcement.
So those. Access or deficits.
Yeah.
Um, those are basically going to chew up the fund balance that's carried forward. So, for example. In the Supplemental Law Enforcement Fund coming from fiscal year. Twenty three twenty four, it's projected that there's gonna be about sixteen thousand dollars in carryover. So those funds will then. Be used to cover. The deficit that you're seeing.
Okay.
In twenty four twenty five. Generally, the goal with the special revenue funds are to get the money in and utilize it, you know, when possible.
Right. Okay, um, I can open it up to public.
Can I, can I have double questions first?
Yeah.
So I remember looking at a budget. Document from maybe five years ago, and there were some pie charts and some different ways of present presenting the information. And I just wonder if that's something that you could um create for this budget?
Yeah, so the final product that will come out for um the next meeting will have um. Graphs and pie charts and everything.
Okay, and will there be a kind of a narrative, a written narrative of what you're telling us today?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because that's, I find that really helpful too. I mean, you know, you can look at this column and look at that column and go, oh, there's a difference.
Right.
What is it? Why is it? You know, that's really helpful.
Yeah, so um that that budget will come out just like, you know, um any. Agendized packet, like the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. Plus you also have, you know, the next couple of weeks to. Look over stuff and.
Right, right. I just don't, I don't recall having a lot of um kind of narrative. I'm talking about the budget in in our document last year, not remember, maybe it's there, but I don't. I don't recall um having a lot explained in that way. Um, so just a.
Yeah, I mean.
Just a request that, you know, um. That you maybe can include that.
Yeah, I think the the narrative last year was kind of more background um of. You know, the different funds and stuff, but definitely um. A narrative one is. Moving into.
You know, changes. Away from typical and and what we have historically seen.
Sure.
Be helpful. And earlier when you were talking, I heard you say um that our. Tax, sales, sales tax and use tax is is going way up?
Yeah, um.
Revenue, I mean.
In um. Fiscal year twenty three twenty four, it's projected to be about a hundred and sixty two thousand.
What page is that on?
Um, page five.
Oh, okay.
Is where we only package it about sixty thousand, so. That district tax is really.
Do you, do you have any kind of breakdown of what, where that's coming from?
Um, I don't know, do we have that information available there?
Um, sometimes that information is available through HDL and we can kind of um. Look through their reports and see if there's anything specific, but um it's, you know, the district tax is being applied um. To purchases, to online purchases, to um Blue Lake purchases and um those revenues. Are have skyrocketed compared to where we had been, so um I think there's a lot of. Happening within the the tax world in the state, there's new agreements being negotiated with uh vendors and suppliers based upon. Um, their place of, technical place of business and what that entails or um is. Is identified as, which also helps um to increase those district tax applications to cities.
So would an example of that be? If a contractor were to purchase material at the Milliard for a job. And then those materials were to be delivered to, let's say Trinidad, they would be assessed the Trinidad sales tax, not the Arcata sales tax.
Right, and I think it also comes down to some of the bigger online sales, um where they're now establishing. In state of California, they're requiring um anyone who has sales, I believe, of about for five hundred thousand dollars within the state to. Um, to basically pay the applicable state and district taxes, um where in the past that hasn't always been the case. And that's why big cities were really fighting for fulfillment centers and things because they were actually capturing all of the revenue. Even though the local jurisdictions were bearing imprint, you know, impact of deliveries and things, and so some of that. Has changed through legislative process and renegotiation of those agreements, and that's, we're seeing a benefit from that as well.
That's awesome. Yeah, so you mentioned HDL, what is HDL?
Um, HDL is a um tax analyst um company, they help uh cities. Uh, basically, they go in and they analyze tax data and they um assist cities. With making projections for um for revenues, they also go and advocate for um cities in the event that. A tax is uh misrepresented or mis um. Applied to another jurisdiction, um the city of Blue Lake, we we use them very minimally because of our, you know, our, the nature of. The city's um business when it comes to sales and use tax, um so they um in the past, they've. They've found some revenues that maybe had been mislabeled for another jurisdiction and have advocated for those to come to the city. Um, but we use them very minimally, but they do uh produce several trend reports and those are um. Are helpful, they're usually a little bit more helpful for the bigger jurisdictions who, you know, have. Really substantial amounts of revenue coming in, but um what we're seeing with this district tax, um seeing it's um completely. Um obliterate our projections, um it's something that we'll be paying more attention to as well.
And that's expected to be a pretty um. Pretty consistent number.
I feel like it'll be consistent, if not um continue to increase. I think people are getting, you know, used to. Purchasing online, I don't see that going down. We saw a spike, um you know, around holidays or people are doing a lot of their online shopping. Um, I don't see that that's going to change, and when you look at the nature of our. Economic uh footprint in Humboldt County, there's not a lot of locations or resources available, so a lot of people. I think will continue to um if not stay stable to increase their um online footprint as well.
I have a question too, um. So when a home sale, because there's been, I feel, I feel like there's been um. A lot of home sales recently in Blue Lake, and every time a home sells, of course, the property tax is reevaluated. Then does that generate an additional increase to the city?
It does, and it also has impacts on Proposition thirteen, so as those properties transition out of that Prop thirteen status. Those get reassessed at the new value and that has a huge impact to the city. Um, we do have a lot of historical properties that are have been held generationally that are under Prop thirteen, so as that transitions. Um, that also has a huge impact.
About that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I open it up to public? Or public comment? All right, is the public wanting to discuss anything that we've seen this evening? Kent Sowatsky.
Kent Sowatsky, um. Yeah, we were profiting greatly from our bedroom community of. High value houses that are selling here, and that's a great thing. I have some major concerns and questions. One is on the CBDG loans and how that's being used. It's quite apparent that this uh council. Has no consideration for uh people of low income who might need to fix up their kitchen or their. Bathroom or their foundation or their roof, otherwise we would be using this money for that purpose rather than having it misappropriated for other uses. I did notice the budgeting for the sewer hookups. Was ten thousand dollars, so does that mean with all these big projects such as the Danco project? Instead of paying forty two hookups to ten thousand, the P four hundred and twenty thousand. The taxpayers of Blake are being asked to go ahead and fund that and regarding any of the other housing projects here. Are we supposed to be funding that out of our pockets? Uh, I do have a major concern regarding the structure of how the city uh bills, and I'm sure your auditor will have to come through and. A city clerk regarding that, the auditor will come through or your accountant will come through and certify that your staff is actually using. Twenty five percent, sixty six percent of their time uh on sewer and water. And the city is actually using twenty five percent of their time, there's no. For that, I have a budgeting here, a considerable refund to the repairs. You have a very small amount uh down here for. I put zero on that legally. Uh, and. Adhering to the rules and regulations and doing. Following, carrying principles, following what's common sense, uh the city is going to be prone to that. Your budget here is approximately one million dollars. There's something I need to stop with.
No, go ahead.
Your budget here is approximately one million dollars, if I understand it, we're talking about first time. Today, the supervisors who have, I believe, a six hundred and five million dollar budget, maybe more. Basically have solidified their budget and they're moving forward, so here we're gonna come in with one meeting, I strongly request. That we don't wait and get a packing out here. Uh, Friday at five o'clock. Can we get that ten day before that, so you have time to actually see, you're gonna be discussing. I don't know, maybe you're, maybe you're more competent, you rock scientist, but this is very complicated and it does take time. You need to have time to get your staff to have other questions answered before the meeting, so that you can at least have some appearance of understanding the process that's going on. This uh. There's gonna be a whole bunch more things that will come forward. Uh, you're not allowing for the fact that most likely the city will owe for prior shares uh. Contract. And uh there's gonna be waving arms and say that's not gonna happen, but we'll see how that happens, so.
I, can you tell us, um, you were saying about the retirement and the double staffing? Um, can you tell us how? How long um there's gonna be two people filling one position and also what the, what the cost of that is?
Um, so right now we have uh Vicky Hutton, who is, has been a longtime employee of the city, is our current finance manager. Um, she is um stated that her retirement date will be in December. Um, so Annalee has been cross-training with uh, Vicky for several months and um, our plan, our succession plan. Is to move Annalee into that position, um, Annalee's been doing an amazing job, um, she has an accounting uh, background. Uh, and she's been training uh, regularly with Vicky to be able to take over those systems, and we're, I'm really excited. About that, um, we also have Tony, who um, is in an administrative assistant position and is um, kind of double duty. In her position and also learning a lot of the um, background for accounts payable and receivables, as well as learning some of the city clerk duties. The, the plan is to continue to um, have Annalee as the city clerk as well, but um. Tony will move into the de- the deputy city clerk position, so that they can share those duties and it'll take some of the burden off of. Annalee, she'll do more of kind of the um, oversight administrative side of the city clerk, where Tony will do more of. Um, background work to help get agendas ready and things, um, so that has been um, a continued. Kind of double expense, um, but highly necessary, the position is, you know, it's a very skilled position, it's a very um. Important position, fund accounting is um, is not easy, it's not an easy concept necessarily. It's a whole different way of looking at um, accounting and budgeting and bookkeeping, um, so. Uh, we wanted to make sure we had enough time to be able to make that a smooth transition. And luckily, you know, Vicky will be available to answer questions and things, but, so we're projecting around December, January for that transition to fully happen. Um, Hal is um, retiring as well, um, Hal will be retiring, he said. Probably towards the end of July, um, he may stay on a little bit longer, um, we're uh, currently training. Another employee to take um, his place there, so that's, um, so we have two, basically two um, people in that position right now. Um, but also have some cost savings and um, some other areas of um, public works overall. So that's probably, probably a couple, maybe two months going into the next fiscal year.
It's definitely a time of some transitions, and then just to be clear, the C D B G loans, um. People have to qualify for that, and we're having an, an issue in this town because so many people don't qualify for C D B G loans because they. Are not income qualified, in other words, they're making too much money, so that's one of the biggest reasons why we can't let go of a lot of these funds, is that? Is that what we've learned?
Yeah, we had, we're, yeah, our median income um, has, it depends on what program you're qualifying for. Um, the state uses different um, qualifying methods, um, you know, there's. There's um, programs within the state where you have to literally put a pinpoint on a map of where your project location is. And depending on what um. Designated area, kind of district they have that identified as will determine whether you meet the qualifications. And we're really kind of in awkward position here in Blue Lake, because we also capture some of West End Road. Um, and there's some higher incomes on that side, so that drives, so depending on the town square qualified. But the bike park area um, doesn't qualify um, income-wise, so there's some, there's some, just some different play. Um, with the regulations and how they're being applied through the different programs, um, but yeah, we've, we've, have had trouble. Um, and then it's just a very difficult, complicated loan uh, program to manage, and we haven't really been able to find the resources or the. Um, the, the help to be able to do that, um, the county was doing that for a while, we actually contracted with the county. Um, Paula Mushrush was doing that for um, other cities, um, Paula also retired, um, Andrew Whitney was. Um, took her place, he's now moved over to planning, so I'm not really sure who's even in that role anymore, they're mostly just doing over the counter applications. So, um, you know, there's a lot to, that goes into that, you know, it's an actual loan, so you have to go through and. And apply for, you know, the financing and, you know, we have to apply interest rates and, you know, there's. Uh, liens and things that get applied to titles and, you know, um, negotiated uh, payment schedules and rates, and we just don't really have the. The expertise to be able to do that, and a lot of cities are, are not doing it now because of, you know, the amount of work that's entailed.
Yeah, because years ago we had a panel of citizens here that were listening to people coming forward, but there were a lot of projects. And a lot of people were income qualified in those days as well.
Right.
So that made a big difference.
Now, you could, the city contracted with um, various agencies to run those programs as well.
We did, that's right. Um, all right, I see another hand, I think it's Julie um, on Zoom.
Hey guys, thank you for taking my Zoom and in-person participation, I really appreciate that. Um, I know we're in the beginning stages, even though we should be a lot more evolved than this, um, I want to thank Jackson and Eklin. Uh, my family, three generations have done a lot of business with them, they've been a great firm to work through. I really don't want any public comment to um, come back on them in a way that they feel like they haven't done their job, I know they do, they're professionals. But I would like to recommend that our staff in our council um, receive this information sooner. There was a lot of great recommendations given by the public at our last budget review in June. That I was really hoping to see already prepared in this one, and yet we're having to go backwards in time again, so. Kent gave some great suggestions, he's very versed, um, the county has been going through their budget. If our council. Ever wants a little education on all that, just have the pie grasp, we need to have this stuff broken down and within our grants like we've requested prior. And back when we did the water rate study and analysis, um, man, he did preclude that we would have a little excess funds in that. In that area and that everybody might be surprised if we just like, got a truck. Well, I'm going back to the exact verbiage, and I see here in our water fund, we have vehicles, so I'm just curious, like, you know. A little transparency with all this stuff would be great, there's stuff within there with cars creek, with grants, with um, leases. And we want to know where that's coming from, so that's not our accountant firms uh, situation, that's our staff situation, so let's get that clear. Let's get it transparent, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment? Jean?
I noticed that there are funds for the park and recreation park facilities, department four twenty-five. Recreation department four forty-five, I was wondering, is there a fund for that?
What page do you want?
I'm on page nine.
The general fund.
Four twenty-five?
Mm-hmm, and four forty-five are under the general fund. They are, they're separated as departments. That way they're pulled out separately, so they can be. Monitored separately.
And see, I'm funded eleven for. I didn't see that here, that is notice last year.
Maybe the state park per capita grant? Special revenue funds. So, that was, that would be a special revenue fund, um, it was a state park per capita grant that funded um, all of the repairs and maintenance of the. Park facilities.
Thanks, Jean.
So Fund eleven is not in next year's budget at all? So, um, back to the uh, the retiring transition um. Situation, so once Vicky's retired, and then um, Annalee moves into her position and Tony. Um, is also. Doing some aspects of that. Will the staffing level stay at that point then with two part-timers and two? Well, will Tony become a full timer?
Up to full-time, and so we'll have two full-time um, in the office, and then our other two staff members are part-time.
And so that's the plan is to keep at that level?
At this point, yeah, until we get to a point where either um, staffing, you know, work burdens are, are too much. Or, and we need to come back to council or look at a new um, staffing allocation, um, but we've tried to kind of historically stay with that. Schedule, um, the office slows down a lot in the afternoon, um, our busiest times are usually in the mornings, and that's when we have at least. The extra help, um, the afternoons are really, um, I mean, they can be busy, but they're not as busy as what the mornings are, so. Um, so it seems like that level of staffing has worked for us in the past, and we're hoping that um, that we'll be able to sustain that as well. There may be um, times that we may want to consider possibly contracting um, with Vicky if. Um, once, because she is a person employee, there's a time period where she um, can't come back to the city. Um, but I think that's like six months, so if there were special projects or things or um, end of the year um, type. Um, issues where we needed to have a little bit extra help or expertise, um, as Annalee's transitioning over, that could also be an option.
Contracted retiree, very.
For both municipalities and the retirees.
It's a horse rule.
Or did you have another question? Lisa, oh, okay, go ahead, Christopher.
Could you reiterate and clarify that ten thousand dollar budget thing for the uh, sewer connection? Yeah, no, um.
So I think we just budgeted, um, not knowing what's coming down in this um, coming fiscal year, um, we probably just budgeted for. One sewer connection, um, the projects that we are projecting um, to come to fruition probably won't come. This, this coming fiscal year, so we're not projecting um, any connection fees associated with those larger developments, obviously. Um, once those larger developments are at that point, they will all pay their own uh, fees and connections and permits and. Um, plan check fees and everything as well.
Thank you.
All right, Lisa Hooper, and then Ken.
But what I understand is that it's not geographically, I mean, the naming of it makes me think it's, it's just going to be Powers Creek, but it's geographically. It has applications elsewhere, so if someone elaborate on, I think you're talking about economic developments, that's why the town square got funded. So some, just elaborate a little bit more on the Powers Creek District, um, where it can apply, but then also in the source of revenue. It might be on one of the pages, I just haven't noticed through my mind, and so the source of revenue and how, how it's used, it's just a naming of Powers Creek.
Don't make it answer that, okay, um, sure, so the Powers Creek Fund was traditionally the Industrial Park Expansion Fund, and the revenues associated. That were derived from sales of property in um, the business park, or the industrial park, or which is now the Powers Creek District. The monies were slated to make um, additional improvements into the community, into the, the district or the, the park. Um, to um, attract more business um, to the community, so um, in the past. We had brought projects back to um, the council for approval to utilize funds um, that derive from those sales. Uh, one of those was um, the match and the um, kind of the holding fund for the town square acquisition. Um, that project was also, has also paid back um, to that fund, because we received grant funds to pay that off. So there's been uh, money utilized from that fund um, to do um, different projects. Um, throughout the years, um, to make business more attractive in Blue Lake and, mm-hmm, yeah. It was just, it was derived from the sales of property, yeah. But it was um, it was set up to um, increase economic activity in the community.
So basically, it's just a renaming of the business park, which used to be the industrial park and is now Powers Creek.
Right, yeah.
Moving forward, good.
It's just the name seat is kind of misleading. You know, because it applies to the whole town, it doesn't just apply to Powers Creek.
It just because the funds were originally derived from the sale of properties in the business park, I think that's where, why it got that. Um, that name, and then it carried through, like I said, it was the Industrial Park Expansion Fund, and then. In order to kind of keep it in its context, um, council chose to rename it the Powers Creek District Fund, I agree that it's a little bit. Confining um, based upon what the uses of um, that fund, you know, can be applied to.
Okay, I don't see any new hands up. You've actually spoken already, but, all right, go ahead and speak for another three minutes.
Make a comment, and I see anomalies in a budget, table on page six, engineering fees are budgeted five thousand fifty dollars. Uh, over ten times that amount of dues. And then in the forward year, they're showing that less than half of what was a budget. Five percent of what would actually use is prediction, I think somewhere along the line, eventually you're going to want an explanation as far as, as far as why that.
You said the engineering and what was the other one?
Page six, the level of page.
I thought you said there was a second one.
That's right here.
Size engineering.
No, no, it's just that, no.
Thanks.
Okay, um.
And planning, planning fees are off the charts as well. It looks like, um, planning was budgeted at thirty-five, forty-five, and it's actually forty-five thousand seven hundred. So both of those are exceeding the budget by more than a factor of ten.
Yeah, so they're also project-based, so as we bring in more projects that um, have planning and engineering costs associated with them, those numbers can change. So you would also look at your revenues to um, to balance those out, so we budget in the general fund for basic planning and engineering services. So that we have, the public has access to the, the planner, the engineer, the planner can um. Uh, facilitates the planning commission meetings, um, has office hours, same thing for the engineer, and then we also have special projects. That planning and, that the planner and the engineers um, work on, including um, the road projects, um. They work on waste, water and wastewater projects, um, town square, we have leap funds, reap funds, um, housing element. So those are all associated with those, um, you know, with, with those individuals, um. But they're balanced out by bringing in additional revenues as well to support those.
The permit fees, in other words, the fees that applicants.
Fees are grants, um, so you know, when you look at like the um, the Greenwood Stip Project. That comes with planning, engineering and design costs associated with it, so if we receive funding. Outside of what we're projecting for a general fund use, um, those get built in, and you'll see, you can see those get out of balance. But you also have to look at your revenues and, and your other um, grants and special funds that, that offset those. So it's not that the city is paying out through the general fund, the taxes, we're capturing it back with grants and other revenue sources.
Okay, well, we have a lot to look over and. Questions and comments can be directed to Scott if necessary or our staff. Um, as we move forward on this budget, and I've been through many budgets through my time with the city and. And this is timely, actually, we've actually had budgets that have been carried over into the next fiscal year, so. We're, we're doing good as far as that goes.
Yeah, we don't anticipate that there will be much change to anything presented at the last meeting, um, Scott did a lot of work to get it to this point. So that you kind of, you basically have a final budget presentation right now, and that gives you a couple of weeks to look over the numbers, ask questions. Um, we're happy to answer those, um, but I think, you know, looking at the budget, I think the budget numbers look good. Um, I think the city's trending in a really good direction, um, we're picking up a lot of improvements through the community that will have long-term benefit. Um, we're seeing increased revenues, increased sales tax, increased interest in the community, so I'm pretty proud of where we are. Um, at this point in time, and I think our budget reflects that, and so, um, yeah, we're happy to answer any questions, um. And I, no one asked about vehicles, I thought someone would ask about vehicles, and so I just wanted to throw that out there, um, because I'm sure that will be a question. Um, so just so you know, we are looking at replacing two vehicles in public works, um, we have two vehicles that are, are pretty aged. I think one is like a nineteen eighty-seven truck. I think one is like a nineteen eighty seven truck that's literally being held together with baling twine. And the other is a, I think it's a ninety three Ford Ranger. We are looking at downsizing those vehicles to use utility vehicles. So kind of like the side by sides. We feel that it's a better investment for the city when we look at the functionality and applicability of those vehicles to. What our kind of day-to-day operations are. Being able to use those UTVs will allow us to access properties. That aren't as accessible during the winter months with normal vehicles. It'll also allow us to access the trails. More efficiently. It is also a reduction in fuel costs and so. And insurance and then just the overall cost of purchasing and replacing two vehicles. So looking at about thirty five thousand dollars to replace two vehicles versus thirty five thousand dollars per vehicle. I think is a good investment and it was also identified in our capital improvement. Plan for water and wastewater that was, this was identified as something that the city needed to accomplish. That, you know, we needed to, to look at the replacement of aging infrastructure and vehicles. So this was well within the, the framework of what was adopted as well.
So we'll have one budget amendment at next, at the next meeting, you think? All will have to be, yeah. Okay, what did we discuss? Okay.
So things like the replacing of vehicles, I know that each year our picture for water and sewer should improve.
Which it is.
Right, but we're still running in the red in both, in both funds. So I'm wondering if it makes sense to wait another year.
You also have to look at what you have in your capital reserves and that's part of it. So in capital reserves and your sewer fund, you have like almost one point four million dollars. And you have several hundred thousand dollars also in water. It's just the, the way that they're broken apart. But if you look at in totality, and we honestly can't operate those departments without the necessary vehicles. And I think this city has been completely bare bones for as long as we can without making some major replacements. And I think the, the process that we're going through to try and be efficient and cost effective. Is, is a positive and, but you know, we can't, we can't maintain and operate these systems if we don't have the proper equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Noticing that the capital, the water capital reserve has fourteen thousand dollars. I thought you said like, I don't know, I'm not sure what you're.
In your operating budget.
Our op, yeah, we have, so, so that was something else that came up when we were talking about funding the. Water lateral replacements on Greenwood. As there's very little money in the water capital reserve fund. We're taking, we took that money or we plan to take that money out of the, the operating fund. So we're still operating in the red, but we have.
We do.
So I, I feel like it would be wise to come up with some sort of a plan as to at, at what point we're going to start diverting money from operating. Into capital reserves rather than just keep spending capital reserve money out of the operating fund. I mean, because it just, to me, it doesn't make sense to say, well, we don't have any money in the capital reserve fund, but we have a little extra over here. So let's just use that. For, for this other purpose. It just, it seems like we should have a plan.
Well, that was all part of the rate struc, the rate study and that was recommended by Bridget when she did the analysis. To look at the longevity of our systems and what our improvements need to, to look like. And that was one of the issues is that we had been traditionally cap, capturing, we were going in the hole and operating, but we were. Building a very substantial reserve in the reserve funds. So sewer is a perfect example of that. We were going in the hole. On our operating side, but we were building up a massive reserve. And so it needed to be balanced out and those reserves also need to be spent. We can't sit on those reserves and then, you know, tell the rate payer, you know, we've got to increase your rates. But on the other side, we're, we're sitting on huge balances. So that's one of the things that we're doing right now is looking at that. You know, the, the infrastructure improvement needs in totality and looking at the best way to leverage the funds that we have to be able to get larger projects for the city. So looking at, you know, going after maybe a three million dollar capital improvement project. With USDA and leveraging our match with our reserves by capturing maybe a sixty percent grant. Allocation through that process. So we are looking at that and looking at what those long-term objectives and investments look like. And making sure that, you know, we're looking at investments that have the longevity that we need to, to substantiate. The amount of funds that we're putting towards them.
Great. So technically, we can't use sewer reserves for water projects, correct?
No, no, but I mean, if, no. I mean, I don't know if you could lend yourself money from a fund. I don't know that that's, I'm not sure with. I think that's would be something for your accountant and your auditors to give you advice on.
Because, so we've talked a lot about the, the water tank. Replacements, but that'll all come out of water.
Water and sewer. I mean, you can't have sewer without water. So there's some applicability between those two departments.
Okay, so. Is there some idea of how much, much reserves we have to have for that, for those projects?
I believe our match is going to be around six hundred thousand for that project. It just depends on how things play out with cost estimating. Cost estimating is all over the board right now. But there's also opportunity for us to leverage other grants. So if we receive the federal allocation from FEMA. We'll match it with some state grants as well. And so we'll be looking to offset any type of investment that the city has to meet. Through grants and other programs.
So does that mean we don't really need six hundred thousand?
I don't know yet. I, I don't know. We don't, we're not at that point where we have a fully designed and estimated project. To really know what those final numbers look like.
All right, we have some homework to do and we'll be back here in two weeks and you'll be here for the final presentation. Thank you. All right, we will move on then to council correspondents. We got something from Kent Zawoski via email. He writes, Mandy, you have asserted that since the bridges were engineered by the Blue Lake City Engineer, they are fine. This is not true. They are missing at least one major component. That component is the ability to remove at least sixteen feet. Of the required vertical slats between the bridge floor and the hard rail on both sides of the walkway during flood episodes. This lack of proper engineering endangers the public health, safety and welfare. You were down there when Greg and I were trying to untangle what was the first of possibly many trees that could be caught on the bridge. Once one is tangled in what amounts to barricade to natural passage of debris down Dave Powers Creek. The result will be a dam at least four feet above the deck of the bridge. A dam of this nature will cause unnecessary flooding of structures improperly affected and possible loss of property and life. Please address this issue before next rainy season. Please acknowledge receipt of this communication and have it read into the record. At tomorrow's six ten twenty twenty four Blue Lake City Council. Kent Zawoski. Did we have any other correspondence this evening? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, we don't have one. Reports of council and staff. I guess I'll go around the days. Did you have a meeting you attended? Okay.
We had a. Well, I went to two meetings. I went to the Public Safety Commission meeting first week and the Parks and Rec Public Safety didn't have much. Thirty minute meeting and just kind of blew through and postponed a bunch of things. The Parks and Rec meeting was really good. We had a lot of good community input and. A lot of excitement about what's going on and what's coming up. Couple of the commissioners are looking for a site to, to develop a disc golf. Course. So far, we haven't identified that. What else? Well, they were talking about how the disc is kind of dangerous if it hits somebody. So it can't be through town. It has to be a designated course. Apparently, I used to think frisbee golf was just frisbee golf, but disc golf is different with a heavier disc. And, and it can, it can cause injuries. So. Looking for something that's off the beat path where people aren't going to get whacked in the head with the disc.
Definitely not meant to be thrown to each other.
And, and anyway, just getting ready for Annie Mary Day and talking about parades and good times. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, the arson heritage meeting that was supposed to happen last night and I was supposed to. I was the alternate for Elizabeth K, who's not here, was canceled. The Economic Development Commission meeting, which would have been today at four thirty, was also canceled. I did attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting last night and we have twenty five booths so far, vendor booths. Yeah, it's great. And of course, the exciting news is that we're getting a speeder train on Annie and Mary Day. It's only going to be about two hundred feet along the trail. And they're bringing out a temporary rail to put down and then they're going to be charging maybe five dollars. A ride for the speeder train to go back and forth. So that's kind of a new exciting thing that's happening.
Who's doing that? Is it Timber Heritage?
And I think last night Hannah Padilla became the new treasurer. So that was a good. Good thing to have. And who? Colin? Okay, all right, thank you. And then just wanted to report that the Wanika plant sale was very successful. We made five hundred and five dollars last Saturday. That's a record for us. Our last year, last year we made about four hundred and fifty dollars, which was a record last year. So now we broke our record. And appreciate all the people that came out and bought plants and donated plants as well. Thank you all for that. That was a great event. There's still no date as to when they will be open, but they will be selling pies and goodies at Annie and Mary Day. Out in the parking lot for the, mainly for the car folks that are going to be there. And then I will not be able to make the Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting, nor will my alternate because it's the same day as graduations. At Arcata and McKinleyville High School this Thursday. So I let Eric know that we won't have representation. And then I'll, I'll make the HCOG meeting a week from Thursday. I think that covers it.
Could I, could I ask why those two meetings were canceled? Arts and Heritage and the Economic Development?
Yeah, we canceled Economic Development just because we were so deep in working on budgets and it was going to be the same. The same time as this meeting and we just didn't have the capacity to really put together the agenda and facilitate it. Scott and I had been working on the budget up until five fifteen tonight. So we asked EDC if they would. Consider couns, canceling and, and they said that would be okay. And then Arts and Heritage, we just didn't really have anything on the agenda. To be able to work on. We had just had our last meeting and so that meeting was also. Canceled just for kind of lack of things to discuss at this time. So we'll be catching, once we get through budget. This is a really busy time for us. Scott's only available so, so many days and hours. So we've been working a lot of late hours and coming in early to, to work on this. So we're just a little bit taxed at this point. And then the extra meetings just kind of add another layer.
And a lot of people are out of town and that kind of.
It's a busy time. Yeah, there's a lot going on, lots of graduations and people are, yeah, kind of wrapping things up with school and stuff.
I, you attended chamber for me. Thank you very much. And then redeck is not until next week, so I can report on that at our next council meeting. But one interesting thing about redeck is that the committee has made a commitment to. Holding redeck meetings at various locations within the various cities, which is really exciting instead of just meeting at Eureka. So. This month's meeting is going to be held in Rio Del, which is really exciting. And then from there on out. Municipalities or cities can, can request those meetings to be held within their own districts. So it's really exciting.
It's good. It's nice. Okay, we don't usually have public comment on our reports, but if there's public comment. Lisa Hoover and then Kent.
I have a determination from county council at one time. You got eight titles on your public's entitled comment. And your ten items, including the pledge of allegiance. I've never availed myself of that one. I did attend some of these meetings. I did want to mention Arts and Heritage changed their name. But that was not registered as far as I can see on, on the city webpage. So maybe for next class, it'll be on there. So I'll know whether it's canceled or not. So anyway, then I'll call off and see if you have a quorum or not, or if you can. But I did recommend that that be taken care of. So that we all know when these meetings are and, and get them off the webpage and post them correctly and they have there as far as. And, and post them and let us know obviously when they're canceled. Some of us do take a lot of bar time. They would usually just hand only be.
So Arts and Heritage moved to the second Monday?
They're the second Monday and we've realized that's also Chamber of Commerce.
Never gets kicked out a little bit early sometimes.
Yeah, and so we are thinking that maybe Arts and Heritage can change their time. If you keep the same day, but change their time. So that'll be something that we'll discuss at their next meeting. We've just been trying to figure out times where people can meet and there's not someone else scheduled and. There's actually a room available and so we've, we keep running up against that issue. I think the second Monday will work because that'll give us a. Basically, we'll have Public Safety on the first Monday, Arts and Heritage second Monday, Planning Commission the third Monday. EDC is the second Tuesday. And Parks and Rec is the third. First Wednesday?
So if you had the Arts and Heritage meeting at six thirty, Chambers at five thirty, they should be able to wrap. An hour, but I was going to say that this is a busy time for the Chamber with Annie and Mary Day. So I don't know how long the meeting went this last time. I left around six. Okay.
Somebody brought up the posting in a couple of different ways, videos and minutes. And so I'd like to just touch on that and find out where we are in terms of getting. I know Justin, for everything that he, every recording he has, he's putting it on YouTube. But I know the city has many of those same recordings, but they're not available to the public. So I'd like to.
They're available at Access Humboldt.
In the last couple, about the last week? Have you posted anything to Access Humboldt in the last week?
The city council meetings.
But those haven't been posted since April. So missing May, we're missing the May Planning Commission meeting.
We don't do planning, oh, we do now, do Zoom for Planning Commission.
Right, so Justin didn't have a recording of Planning Commission. So when Gary Reese told Lisa to go watch the video. She couldn't watch the video because it's not anywhere because you guys have that recording, but Justin didn't have it. So he wasn't able to upload it. But you guys have it, so you can.
Okay, we can, we can post that. But we've been, when we get the recordings from Justin, we send them over to Access Humboldt, so.
You're getting, I thought you guys were recording them now. No?
Well, we have a double recording, but Justin's system is the one that has the quality recording that we're using.
This is the one that posts everything. We don't.
This is the one that posts everything. We don't, did, oh, see, the Zoom air planning mission?
That was ours.
Recorded on, off.
Yeah.
With the good recording.
Okay.
You, so, that's why I didn't post it, because I did, I didn't record it on my computer, so only has the, the planning mission.
The Zoom recording. I guess. We've never sent the Planning Commission meetings over, but we can. Well, we just started.
Okay.
Recording them, so.
So I think Justin's trying to say that you guys recorded it not just through Zoom, but through the whole.
Correct.
His process.
Oh, because we set up with your system with, yeah.
I put the program on, on these computer, and we were testing fully your guys' system on the planning commission.
Okay.
Your, your guys' computers and everything, so I never got that recording because the actual recording, like I would ordinarily do, was done on.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we can pull that over and send it to Access Humboldt.
Yeah. Great. And then the other issue is the minutes. We haven't had minutes published on the website where they're supposed to go for close to a year. So we really need to get those out there. Thank you.
Um, if there's no more reports of council, did staff have any reporting?
Nope, this evening, we will have reports at the next meeting.
Okay. And future agenda items, I have the finalized budget and the budget amendment that we'll be dealing with. And anything else others have? And we can have our, uh, meeting on the Monday is good for you, the seventeenth, we'll talk about when we can meet for our agenda meeting. The second agenda, or I can't do it, okay, we'll talk about that. All right, we are now on adjourn.
I motion adjourn.
Second.
Of course, I'm going to be able to allow, make second for an agenda future tip item.
Uh, we could, I don't usually open it up for public, but we could have public comment on agenda items, future agenda items.
I have a question, but deny the, uh, ability to put, uh, on the item as far as, as far as how you are putting your employee's hour, your, 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 and, uh, it's, it's in the city's best interest to address that and understand what's going on and get a staff report. Uh, uh, eventually you will get one from our control room, and, uh, and with the recommendation of potential potential anticipated litigation regarding potentially refunding the people based upon, uh, incorrectly reporting your time on those two funds, but I just, I did recommend that you have that discussion, and maybe we'll all hear it is the whole purpose in every way, seek and form. I can see this definitely going to the point where you would have a bar on, and it would be based on the screen time on your computers. So if those people are not using their screens, that purpose can save ratio of the state bill, including city manager, three-fourths of her time, city could be up to a very, very large adjustment in large, so, right, so. That would all based, for making the view, based upon your rate increases you had, and that's incorrect, and that's called, that's an over, a dual over underrated, if something you see.
I see a hand raised. Julie.
Okay, Julie. Um, yes, I'd like to jump in on an agenda item. Thank you, Kent, for being in house. I did raise my hand, but felt inappropriate to keep it up because it was kind of getting skipped over. I would like to go back. These are not recommendations from the Parks and Rec, um, commission, however, um, prior to their last two meetings, there was dialogue from, um, Emily that the first meeting, two meetings ago, uh, the dialogue was that Mandy was procuring River Bar access, and she really had not much more to, um, add to that. And at our last meeting that I was able to attend, um, Emily also gave dialogue to that there has been meetings, um, specific to that, uh, um, River Bar access. Um, there's also been complaints issued from our, um, city staff towards, uh, private property owners through the county. None of this is preview to the council, and it is only being brought up through, um, underlying tones throughout commission and community. I would highly suggest that at this point in time, if there is background going on with any of these situations, and there has been meetings and discussions, that that would be highly prioritized as a future agenda item. Thank you.
Thanks. So, all righty, um, any other items? All right, uh, there was a motion made by Elise Scifani, seconded by Christopher Edgar to adjourn. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.